Collegiate to order. We have the public comments, not the union comments. Now we move on to approval of minutes of the annual organizational meeting. Right, your motion? Motion by Tyvek, second by Jack Wilson, Mr. Wilson, always favor. I oppose. Bearing none, motion passes. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of July 18th. And motion. Motion by Tyvek, second, second by trustee Preston. All those in favor? I oppose and we're not. We'll move on to reports, chairman's reports. I want to thank all of you for stepping up to take ladies out of situations. A email just all Bethany will be personnel. Pat's agreed to stay on finance. When we will be. At student affairs. Student affairs. And Mr. Preston will stay on as academic. Mr. Wilson saying our policy. Tyvek is a stay on. With the foundation. And Mr. Landry, who's done outstanding job over the years, will stay on buildings and grounds. So I thank you all. I also would like at this time to recognize. Mr. Landry and myself have both been reappointed by the governor. So returns to 2031. We have a couple of motions tonight. We have a couple of motions tonight. We have a motion to. To renew our our membership with NYCCP. NYCCP is, for those of you who are not aware, is a good learning institution where trust each new trustees, in particular, and giving us older trustees. They have a conference at least once a year. They discuss issues that come up amongst all community colleges within New York State. They're affiliated with the National Association as well. They advocate for us. They've been doing a great job at the Capitol advocating, talking to our different representatives about how we can improve with our funding for community colleges. And also they advocate when there's a change at the top of. The water education, the college water education. So with that. I have a motion that recommends that board of trustees approve the membership renewal of NYCCP. The period beginning September 1st, 2024, and ending August 31st, 2025. And that's an overall motion, seconded by Bethany. All those in favor? Opposed? Same? Motion passes. Second motion I have tonight. Is a motion. For the 2024-2025 Beaumont College Association Agreement. Every year, the agreement between the college and the Beaumont community at Beaumont College Association requires renewal. President recommends that the board of trustees approve this agreement between the college and Beaumont College Association. The periods beginning September 1st, 2024, and ending August 31st, 2025. And authorize the chair, the board of trustees, to sign the document. And that's an overall motion. Seconded by trustee Wilson. All those in favor? Opposed? Bearing none, motion pass. Thank you. You also got at your desk is the. Annual. See you in a moment.
I'll put the intro down.
Yeah, if you fill out, please give them back to reassessing people. With that, I will turn it over to. Our president. For his report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a few brief items. We continue to get some good press, some good. Opportunities to showcase our cyber lab. This week, we had the sheriff's office from Montgomery County and its IT team. So they could see the range in action and talk about opportunities that we've had to partner in the future. On Friday, we had the diversity of Albany coming in. They're very interested here. We already have dual mission agreement with them. They're very interested in the range. They are, we talked about potential opportunities where they might deliver some of their course from here on campus. Using our range, so we're very excited about that. There are several of their their departments are coming, more than they need. So we continue to to get through my job out of the range. Today, we had a nightcap meeting. That's the New York Community College Presidents' Association. And where we had the opportunity to kind of hear unfiltered some of the updates that are coming down from SUNY. Talk about some of our challenges. Many of you know Joanna Dupontier, who's the. Associate Provost for Community or Vice Chancellor for Community Colleges. And she has submitted her retirement. She will be retiring in by the September. And we'll miss her. She's been an incredible advocate for the last 15 years for community colleges. She's been a good friend to this college. So we do understand that their intention is to fill that position. The last time that that position came vacant, they didn't fill it right away. Discussed that that there wasn't a need to have that advocacy and a position focused on community colleges. But thanks to organizations like NYCCT and the Community College Presidents', that position was ultimately filled. Joanna's been doing that for the last 15 years. It's going to be difficult to choose to fill, but there will be a national search to to. Fill that vacancy, what's what's happens. They're also talking about the interim appointment before, which is maybe takes some time. There's, they continue to roll out small, little grant projects. We've been the recipient and beneficiary of some of those. Last year, we received a small amount for our nursing simulation lab. We are getting another one this year. We have to spend a plan, so it looks like as long as we're in in the guidelines, that'll be another $20,000, $25,000. We can apply towards our nursing sim lab. So that's that's a nice benefit to us. We're looking for ways to release some of the pressure on property. But it, and then there's some some other small grant opportunities that are coming down. Like our lead load team recently to provide an application for community college basic needs grant. That's a federal grant. It's rather significant as we did receive the award by the half million dollars. Oh, is that correct?
Well, over the course of three years, it's not.
Okay, it's almost a billion dollars. We won't find out probably till the end of the year. We're looking forward to naturally putting the strong proposals, looking forward to seeing where that goes. And I'm going to stop there because I'm going to pick back up when we get to the the finance committee.
Okay, just just one comment. If we could possibly send a congratulatory card or letter to Joanna. She was very instrumental in helping us through the different searches that we had for president. Was also very instrumental with our accreditation process. And I really do think that this board, along with the other boys that in the state deserve or some sort of recognition. So if we could. Moving on to foundation before by trustee Dashman.
Sure. If each primary sale is. Was Friday, August 23rd, was canceled due to number one, this other time everybody is on vacation. And also later day holidays nearby, and if you're if we might not have a good crowd. And that's why we scheduled it in sometimes January, the fifth Friday, January. My second item, 25th anniversary of third of January will be celebrated. The reception would be Friday, September 20th, at 6 o'clock. And this day is a show, anniversary, 23th anniversary show will open August 28th until November 4th. And and then the next. The next show will be open November 18th, featuring B. How do you spell it? How do you pronounce that? B W I A T R. Writer, writer. Anyway, excuse my, I don't want to pronounce it.
You do as well as I can.
And if anybody's interested to know about his work, you can go online. S H P T P slash dot dot slash slash. And then run that artist.com slash. By those dot H T M. And finding the some of the highlights of his work, which is amazing. Next item, the 17th annual distinguished alumni and fourth annual cloud tower power award. Dinner is the meet at the Holiday Inn Johnston, November 7th. If you have any nominations, please send it to the foundation office before September 11th. And of course, make your reservation for that day, November 7th, November 7th. Recently, if you remember in my past report, I I mentioned that. Foundation reached out to, of course, Mrs. Lancy reached out to the Charles Wood Foundation. And asked for the supporting for the college health mission, specifically nursing program. They pay us $3,500. And they said, if you can, if somebody else donate that amount, we're going to match it. And Mrs. Lancy get in touch with the Johnson Hospital Foundation. And they were very generous. They sent us $33,000. And of course, they. Send us $32,500. Now, the total is minus $3,000, which will be supporting the nursing program initiative. Regarding the last one at least, regarding the 155 acres of land. And right now, it is at a title company for closing. And that's, I'm delighted for if there's not any question. Or is that, it was like, do you have?
No, just, I said all the paperwork and everything was notarized yesterday. We overnighted it and once it's a title company today, should probably close the remaining bidding. 450,000.
Thank you, trustee Dashman. Mr. Terry, yes, I forgot, but probably the most important thing in the session, right? And that is the law from Pat Bradley, who is our active being of academics. Most of you know Pat, many of you know Pat. Pat has been at the college for 28 years, 28 years, 28 years. Professor Pat Maddox, and he spent many a night with us here at trustee meetings as representative of our. Association of College Educators, which we always just talk base, which is why I struggle. But Pat's agreed to serve as our as our acting faculty. So I want to welcome him.
Hey, thank you. Glad to hear that.
Thank you.
Much to the committee reports. Finance committee with trustee Beck.
I'm going to pass that over to the president.
I've agreed to to fill in for trustee Beck and for Jeff to be on vacation. Of course, it was scheduled for next week. We have, we're, you know, obviously closing down the year, getting ready to to close the fiscal year, which ends August 31st. Everything in terms of the fiscal year is tracking very well. We're getting prepared for our annual honor and the field work associated with that. This is also, as you know, and you've been updated by me monthly on our annual operating budget process. We've submitted our request to the counties, went through Montgomery County last month. Fulton County is scheduled to vote for budget on Monday. I just mean that last week, they considered our proposal. And after some discussion and review of both the. The operating request, capital request that we put in. They decided that they did not feel that the college needed an additional sponsor increase this year. Their at your place is is an awful problem, Mr. Sped indicating that. And, you know, the the primary rationale, both counties contributed significantly last year. But also, when you look at the the. The fund balance the college is currently carrying. And and the reason I started by fighting about closing out our fiscal year is as as we get closer, we have better information now than we did. Three months ago, our fund balance is even stronger than we anticipated. But it's going to be, you know, it's approaching 40%. And that's that is a significant amount of fund balance. So Fulton County is is proposing to adopt a budget that keeps the the sponsor contribution level. That would then consequently. Being a companion resolution from Montgomery County later this month and do the same thing. My recommendation and also at your place is a revised budget summary and a revised three year plan. So you can take a look at those numbers. You know, we're we're projecting somewhere and and. My gut tells me it's maybe going to be a little bit farther north of of 5.7 billion at the end of the year. Of this fiscal year. That's that's a significant amount, particularly as you look at it as a percentage. So my recommendation is that we move forward with the same budget that we provided to you in May. With that additional $100,000 coming out of the fund balance rather than the sponsor, rather than increasing the sponsor contribution, which would require, you know, some significant lobbying efforts on behalf of everyone in the room. And we have our our chair from Fulton County, who is here with us this evening as well. The other option that you have is that if you weren't comfortable with that, you would then have to pass a new budget. At any role or amount, you know, you could, you could say, we're not comfortable taking that $100,000 out of the fund balance. And adopt a budget that is $100,000 or or more. Last, that is not my recommendation. That's not the recommendation of our chief financial officer as well. We are recommending that we proceed with the budget as planned with additional $100,000 coming out of the fund balance. So we had, it's it's very much in line with what we had planned for this year. And we are, as I said before, we are projecting that we're going to draw significantly less. From the fund balance than we plan to. So we're very comfortable making that recommendation to you as a board. But it is ultimately your decision of what direction we want to go in terms of of our operating budget. What I will tell you is that time is of the essence. Because we have a budget spinning to sort of buy the 15th of August. So it's tight with the Fulton County vote next week. But. With that, I will, but you know, and again, when you look at the three year plan. Even if if we were to follow through each of those years with with the draw that we suggested. We would still be in a pretty comfortable place at the end of those three years.
Does this need a motion with the evidence?
It only if you wish to change. So the budget that you've submitted, we're not, I'm not recommending you to change the total.
Then your recommendation is that we take the $100,000 from the fund.
That's correct. So that would keep your budget that you approved in May the same. And the only difference with with that is is really up to the two counties, which is how much they're willing to triple that. Fulton County and their memo that they they sent to me indicated they're comfortable with the size of the budget. They're just not comfortable accessing for them to entry for the $50,000. So they're going to be in anticipation of of a similar vote by Montgomery County, they have a similar resolution, resolution thinking. To or action that they're against.
Oh, right. It's ahead of submit. Or the two. Three year plan.
That's correct.
We outlined the six years before that, we didn't ask for any increase from either county. So the three year plan. By November, it was $100,000 last year. This move for this year is.
Yes.
And then the following year.
Correct.
So what if we go with your recommendation? Where is that the next year?
So the revised plan you have at your desk. Takes out the $50,000 this year, but you can use it in the next year in the year three of the three year plan too. So that we would be. You know, everything remains steady. Now, we had a huge influx in the revenue, the revenue first change. That's, we could revisit that next year. But the plan that we're proposing. The only difference is we're taking around that $50,000 this year.
Only for this year?
Only for this year.
And then Fulton County, the vice chair, they agree that they are going to.
I would, I would characterize that way. I would characterize it as they are almost certainly, well, the finance committee almost unanimously. Felt that this year, a $50,000 sponsoring piece is not appropriate, given the other requests that we made. And besides the rest of that. There was no comment, if you correctly, there was no comment on year four, year two to three common plans.
And, you know, number one, we we are very grateful for the support we get from. We are very grateful for the support we get from both counties. And but in my opinion, in my humble opinion, this is the jewel. And you guys are very proud what Dr. Truck and Miller, staff and faculty, they do. What they do in this college. We are like in business and the students are our customer. And we have to keep up with the rest of the community college. And with that, I understand you guys have your own dilemma as far as the finance. But we. When you don't participate, then naturally Montgomery County withdraw there. You know, clearly, we we are suffering $100,000. And. Every year, everything is going to get more expensive. It's not going to get better next year. I don't know, not that we are not grateful, but. We are like, you are like parents, we are like children, we turn into our parents for help. And I don't know whether you, does you think it 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 would be effective if all of us come to the board meeting?
I I really absolutely don't want to get into that. I I can tell you that I was the only one that voted against the, not only the finance committee, but I would give the vote. This other seven voted to take $50,000 out. They are long to make up 54% of those who voted for. And. That tells me that there's pretty little chance of.
I think useless if you come. That's what you are trying. I know you you personally are very, very supportive of it. And we are very grateful to you.
And it was pointed out to me by. Our administrator of the county that we still have left in, I think, $250,000 worth of capital projects. That just brought up to me. So that is being, as far as I know, that is being left alone.
Yeah, so I'm also, I'm going to be honest with you, the finance committee wasn't given the true story when this was proposed. That is the fact that no one had the common consent to tell that committee. That Montgomery County already approved that. Is that true? And I I was. Is that true? Yes or no? Yes or no answer? Was that true?
Yeah, that's true.
So Ted was out there at the the meeting, I don't know if that's just going to be, I did not know the answer when we're the other way, so. Well, I think we need to go with taking out our their funds this year. But hopefully, next year, we won't get short shoot it. By the counties. Hopefully. So it's going to be, I'll leave a fate. Any other stack, Tech and Billy, or anybody else?
I think it's the best decision for the college. I think it's the best decision for the trustees for this year.
I agree.
And if you might need it in the form of a motion, I can make a motion.
The only one thing that we would have to do if you're advising the budget. We're not, so it's just a matter of discussion. Okay, we'll move on and.
I thought I don't agree with what you said. I know that, I know.
I I agree with Tyvek, but I think with the war, it was better, unfortunately.
At this time, it's the best.
Yeah, we did what they had, we gave them all the information they wanted. Four of tongue, right, you can do good part. And the piano, I'm saying, also, we're trying to. Good stewards and how we run the college and we find you so. Correct. And it comes back to haunt us, maybe because of teary people have a little bit more. Chair. We'll move on then. Anything else, Dr. Truck?
That concludes our part.
Thank you. Move on to buildings and grounds, trustee Landry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The painting phase bids will open on July 24th in San Diego. Hope the county finance committee approves the awards of carter construction. This is going to go to a forward vote after funding. After that, we will go to Montgomery County later. So that's all for the time coming. Certainly, the painting. That is the only big thing that we want to work out. There are a few, I mean, different things. Chose the same effects most important.
So that before you hold it.
And I just want to add. That part of the $250,000 Fulton County, $250,000 Montgomery County, and $500,000 state match next year is the next round of payment. So we want to keep that momentum going and get that project done. Because it's it's, that's the way to do it.
They had a nice building, but if we don't have a good parking lot here.
Yeah.
Or you got parking lot, and you have to go to three or. Hey, any other questions for trustee Landry? Not, thank you, trustee Landry. And we'll move on to academic affairs with trustee Preston.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things, just a quick announcement, I'm a grant update. Here initially in the business. I'll participate in open house to table for the smart programs. They reported 20 new students are involved in the literacy course, which is great. On the nursing for the third year, nursing facility members Cynthia and Jesse created a medical academy of science and health event on campus. That just featured at the Hudson Market area health education center. So that's some publicity for them in the program. And Cynthia, again, attended the National American Association of Practitioners. And Cynthia, again, attended the National American Association of earth practitioners conference. So like Monta, it is the summer.
Thank you, trustee Preston. Are there any questions? If not, we'll move on to student affairs with the privateer's.
The athletic department wants you to know that the soccer season has started. Tryouts were held in July for the men's men's soccer. The Raider Nation, SUNY FMCC commercial is currently running. You may have seen it on WNYT along with other. Advertising venues, YouTube. CBS6, WXXs and ABC News 10 during this time of the Olympics. The ads also announced our incident on Met and Met Week, which is this week. The first of three new student orientations were held on July 30th with more than 50 students and about 20 parents attending. There are two other meeting sessions to be held on August 22nd with September 3rd. And it is a great cross-campus coordination effort and really meant well. The staff program completed its annual summer academy and the liberty partnership program is continuing its summer program through next year.
Any questions for our lead? Not, we'll move on to. Mercy and quality and inclusion. That report is included in your packet. Mr. Van Vliet wasn't able to hear the secret. So. We'll move on to accreditation. That report for this. Thank you. And we'll move on to personnel with trustee Renee. Renee.
Thank you, Chair. So we have some. Staff updates. Angela Mitchell resigned his liberty partnership program as effective the end of July. Suzanne Johnson will be the main as staff specialist August 19th. We have a new hire, Julie Grisley will start as full-time science instructor on September 1st. And so who should be aiming will start as full-time computer science, computer information system instructor. We do still have certain things in progress, procedure, HR administrator, LPP director and staff specialist. That's my report.
Thank you, trustee Jordan McKinnon. Very professional. Not, move on to policy with trustee Wilson. I have no report to see. Thank you, trustee Wilson. Other business, just one final thing in closing. I, I hope that both Montgomery and Fulton County boards. Realize how brutal this board is, how brutal the college is with the spending and. But also by. Quality education in service to the students to come here. Who are representatives, who are representatives of them for our community, for our student community. And just want, and I hope that they realize how diligently we work, make sure that we give a good pressure to the students, good education.
Okay, Mr. Chair, and I just want to add my thanks to everybody for being here tonight since we have been up a week and. Have much time to see your packets and. Make a decision on whether or not to be here. Not, but it did invite you to have a forum next week and we certainly needed to take action before both having votes on budget. So. Really appreciate everybody's flexibility and the voice to be here tonight. More testament to the support that you all provided in the college and I appreciate that.
Hey, any other objectives to be brought up? If not, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Motion by Ty Bay, seconded by trustee Beck. Almost in favor. All the same, we're not, we're both in a stance.